The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, according to my timer here on this computer, it says seven o'clock, so we will begin. Welcome to the Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, April 20th, 2020, 7:00 p.m. We do not have any presentations this evening, however, we do have a public hearing. So before we take comment on the public hearing, I will ask the Town Manager to review the procedures for those who wish to listen or watch our meeting, and also the method by which they can make a comment during our public hearing portion of the meeting. So Robert, if you would lead us off with that, and then I'll ask, is Carol here to read the notice of the public meeting?
Yes, she is.
Yes, I am.
Okay, Carol, after Robert's all finished giving the instructions, then I'll ask you to read the notice of the public hearing.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Citizens who want to provide public comments during the regular portion of the meeting, or as part of the regular portion of the meeting, can do so in two ways. One is they can send an email to the Town Council at TCPublicComments, all one word, TCPublicComments@plainville-CT.gov, or you can leave a voicemail message at 860-793-3256. And you have a three-minute time limit for that. Any of those emails or voicemail messages will be sent directly to the Town Council so that they can review it and either respond at the next meeting or respond personally depending upon the nature of the comments. For the public hearing this evening, it's a public hearing on streets, sidewalks, and driveway ordinance. And I guess we could start by asking Town Clerk Carol Scultecki to read the call of the public hearing.
Thank you. Notice is here by given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, April 20th, 2020, to hear public comments on the proposed amendments to ordinance, Chapter 374 Streets, Sidewalks, and Driveways, Article 1, Street Openings. A copy of the proposed ordinance amendments is on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the Town Clerk, and online at www.plainvillect.com dated at Plainville, Connecticut, the 16th day of April.
A couple of the highlights of the amendment to the ordinance. First is that contractors will have to register in advance to perform work in the town right away, i.e. in the streets, and there's a $50 fee for that. Only licensed contractors will be allowed to register. Contractors will have to provide an insurance surety bond for $10,000 plus a cash bond of $2,500. They will also have to provide a certificate of insurance. The ordinance will also include a 48-hour advance notice required before digging in the streets. And again, the contractors will be required to install a transitional, what we call a transitional patch, that would last approximately one year. And then, lastly, the town will create a permanent restoration fee process whereby the town will make the permanent street repairs after the work has been completed to ensure that it's properly done. The town has made arrangements for residents to comment on the proposed ordinance this evening. Kevin, can you tell us how many people are listening on the telephone this evening?
This evening, we have no listeners.
Okay, we have no listeners on the phone this evening, but in short order, the way we would normally do this, the moderator would open up, moderator being Kevin, would open up each phone line individually and ask whether you would like to speak on the ordinance. If you do, you will then be asked to give your name and address, and we'll be giving three minutes to provide your comments. Please limit your comments to the proposed streets, sidewalks, and driveway ordinance only. Kevin, did anybody join us?
Not at this time.
Okay, Kathy, I don't know if you want to close the public hearing then. You know, this would be the same setup that we would have for the budget public hearing on May 4th.
I think if at this time there are no callers, then we can probably pretty much close that public hearing and continue on with the rest of our meeting. And with the agreement of the council, that's, I believe, how we should proceed at this point.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, I'm seeing heads nod, so that's what we'll do. We'll continue on with the rest of our meeting right now. The next item of business we have is the minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the minutes of April 6, 2020, regular meeting; April 7th and 9th, 2020, special budget meeting.
Dave Underwood, second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes at this time? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion passes. Onto the next item of our business, announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make tonight? Okay, I'll just add a little side note. I've been during this confinement doing some walking at Norton Park. I was down there last week, and just to report, the paving is going along remarkably quickly. Dominic Machini has been there every day that I've walked by, and there are massive amounts of very large pieces of equipment from Telcon down there. There's pavers, and there's asphalt trucks, and there's people raking the asphalt, and there's rollers rolling the asphalt. So I just want to say, it's interesting if you're interested in seeing how that's being done. They're down there, and there's a lot of work being done, and it looks like it's coming along very well. So I just wanted to thank our Public Works Department, particularly Dominic and his crew for being on there, keeping the traffic rooted the way it needs to be. And I'm sure there'll be more of that going on in the rest of the week. Okay, if we have no other announcements-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, real quick, Christopher Wazorko. I just want to report, Jesse and I have been working with the Town Manager, Rob Buden, and a couple other staff on the general fund policy. We had our first meeting last week. We have a couple people that we'd like to get some input before we actually formally present something to the council. But over the next two weeks, the plan would be for Jesse and I and the staff to finalize a recommendation and bring it forward to the council, most likely in one of the meetings in May. That's it.
Okay. What is the purpose of your subcommittee if you can just inform the rest of those that might be paying attention?
This was, I believe this came out of a few meetings, especially with the audit, where it was recommended that we have a policy for our fund balance, unassigned fund balance. Many communities do. The council at the time expressed an interest in coming up with a policy. Jesse and I, I believe, were the two that volunteered. So we are looking forward to bringing you guys a policy that we think makes sense for the town and get your input and make any changes if we feel it needs to be changed.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anything else anybody would like to add?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's Jesse Maso. I just wanted to comment on Christopher's report. The other thing that the purpose of this subcommittee and to come up with a fund balance policy is to help solidify our credit rating. You know, it's not just about what we're going to go above and beyond to put aside and how we're going to handle those times where we're below that, but it is to help us solidify the pretty sterling credit rating we have. So that's the other piece of this, and why we're doing this.
Okay, well, fund balance, as we all know, is a kind of a fluid situation in terms of any time during the course of a fiscal year. So I guess I'll be interested to read your recommendations once they come out of your committee. These are just recommendations, correct? I don't know how they could be binding on any future council. That would be one question that I would have.
Okay. Do you want an answer? Is that a statement or a question? I'm sorry, let me start.
All right, I don't know if you've actually looked at that or if you're just looking at some of the rudimentary procedures regarding managing that.
Well, we're just trying to come up with a policy. Again, this is Christopher Wazorko. We're just trying to come up with a policy. Certainly, individual councils can make decisions as to exactly how they administer fund balance, especially undesignated fund balance. We're just trying to come up with a policy to give some guidelines, initial guidelines, to any council. And going forward, you know, obviously, it's a policy. You know, it will be information on there just to guide. Individual councils can make decisions based on what they feel is best, but right now, this is just going to be a policy.
One of the highlights of such a policy is that it would be reviewed every two years in what they call even-numbered years, which in January of each year. So that would be after the election, after a two-year election, and there's a new council that comes in, in January, they would review the policy, the fund balance policy, and they certainly could make changes to it, but the idea is to educate perhaps any new members and re, you know, I guess, review existing members, the policy, and determine whether there should be any changes to be considered. So it's not something that goes in place and sits there, you know, on the shelf for a long period of time. It's actually reviewed every two years, right after an election occurs. And, you know, so all the council members, new and old, are on the same page with regards to this policy.
Okay. Any other comments regarding this study that's underway? Okay, thank you for doing that. We'll move on then to appointments and resignations. We have one appointment, so may I ask for the first appointment to be made?
Madam Chair. Jesse Maso, motion to appoint Rick Duhoney, 492 East Street, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion-
I'm sorry, that's Christopher Wazorko, seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Wazorko. I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries. Do we have any other appointments tonight that are not on our agenda? Okay, we'll move along. The Board of Educationally is on, the board is meeting this evening, so we won't be hearing a report from then. Report of the Town Attorney, do we have a report tonight? Okay.
Doesn't look like he was able to join us.
Not in yet. All right. Thank you, Kevin. Then we'll move on to the report of the Town Manager. Mr. Lee, you have some things to tell us about tonight?
I do, I do. The first item is the auditor appointment. In the information package for this evening's meeting is a memo from the Finance Director, Rob Buden, recommending that the Town Council appoint Bloom Shapiro of West Hartford to perform the fiscal year 20 Town Audit. Mr. Buden points out that Bloom did an outstanding job with the fiscal year 19 audit, moving up the timelines to accommodate expected absences, that they worked well with the finance staff, and had a very competent team to perform the audit. Additionally, their audit fee was lower than the other firms that expressed interest with an RFP that was done in fiscal year 19. I do concur with Mr. Buden's recommendation as well. There is an item under New Business regarding this recommendation. If anybody has any questions about it, both Rob and I are on and could answer your questions if you do.
Any questions at this? Okay, thank you.
The next item I have is Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7S dealing with tax deferment and actually with low-interest rate program. On April 9th, Governor Lamont issued an executive order mandating that Connecticut municipalities consider two policies related to tax collections as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The first policy is a tax deferment program that would extend the grace period for paying taxes without a penalty for three months. Normally, taxpayers are required to pay taxes within one month from its due date. The second policy is called the Low Interest Rate Program that would set the delinquent interest rate for all taxes due at 3% for a three-month period. Town staff, including Rob Buden, Anne Marie Haring, Anna Legassi, Attorney Mike Mastriani, and myself, reviewed both policies, including an explanation of purpose and intent issued by the Office of Policy and Management, as well as a guidance document issued by the Council of Small Towns and the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Towns are required to adopt one or both policies and notify OPM by April 25th, which one or both were chosen. Town staff is recommending that the Town Council adopt the Tax Deferment Program for eligible taxpayers. Eligible taxpayers are those who complete a form acknowledging that their household income has suffered a reduction in income of at least 20% due to COVID-19. Additionally, businesses and nonprofits would have to acknowledge that their revenue was expected to decrease at least 30% during the period from March to June 2020 versus the same period last year at their Plainville property. The tax deferment would apply to the second installment of the sewer bills due May 1st, as well as the July 1st tax bills. Town staff has come up with a plan to notify residents of this policy should the Town Council approve it this evening. This notification would include a townwide mailing, two code-red notifications, press releases, town website notices, and several A-frame signed notifications placed throughout town. Town staff is not recommending the low-interest rate program due to a possible cash flow issues, which could require the town to do short-term borrowing, which would incur interest that would be paid by everyone. Additionally, if the program was extended beyond the three months, additional interest from short-term borrowing could create more burden on all taxpayers. There is also a concern in administering the program due to the lack of specificity in its description. There is a new item under New Business regarding this recommendation, and certainly we're available to answer questions that you may have about these options as well.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the tax deferment program that will be taken care of later in the meeting?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wazorko.
Yes, this is Christopher Wazorko. Just a quick question for the Town Manager and staff. I know some towns have been reluctant from an administrative standpoint to just do the deferment for those that qualified. You know, and this question for a Town Manager or any other staff that's on, you know, we feel that administering this program would not be too much for the town staff.
Anne Marie, I'm going to let you address that first, if you don't mind. I think you're on. If you want to mute yourself, if you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
I think, yes, it is going to put an additional burden on the staff, but we are prepared to take that on. The collection over the three-month period will put additional burden on the staff, but I think it's something that we have to do. We've spoken a lot about the deferment for everyone versus the deferment for only those who are affected. I believe the reason for the executive order is to give a break to those who are affected and not necessarily to everyone. You know, if people are able to pay their taxes, we certainly would expect them to do so in the timeframe that they've always done it before. This program does give a break to people who are suffering, and even though it could cause additional, it will cause additional work for the office, we think it's only fair that we take this on. We are considerate of those that are affected, but that we need to also ensure there is a good cash flow for the town. We need to make sure that people that are able to pay do pay so that we can continue to operate. We certainly don't want the town to be in a position where we then become not able to pay our bills because of our cash flow issues. So I do agree with you, it's going to cause additional work, but I can assure you, we will take it on and we will do a good job of it. And we're ready for the additional work. We think this is important, and we'll take it on.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions regarding the- I just want to offer a comment. I spoke to Town Manager Lee earlier today about this process and suggested that perhaps those who do submit their application and become part of the deferment program, which they would have to not pay their taxes until October 1st, that we also put in place a method to send out a reminder to those folks, perhaps in the middle of September, not to forget that October 1st is the pay date, and just to be mindful of the fact that after October 1st, the interest will start accruing. So I think it would be probably a good thing just to help people out now that we're kind of really going way off schedule in terms of how people pay their taxes.
And I certainly think we could accomplish that as well.
Okay, thank you. That would be great. There are no other questions or comments about the tax deferment. We'll move on, Robert, to your next item.
Yes, my next item is the fiscal year 21 budget update. On April 7th, the Town Council unanimously voted to recommend the town budget that if adopted would result in a zero-mill increase for fiscal year 21 beginning on July 1st. The proposed fiscal year 21 budget totals $62.5 million and represents an increase of $718,376 or 1.16%. The town portion of the budget, which includes general government, debt service, and capital improvement expenditures, would decrease by almost $200,000 or minus 0.84%. The Board of Education budget has proposed to increase by $915,000 or 2.39%. The overall town budget expenditure increase is approximately half the increase to the inflation rate for the last 12 months. There will be a public hearing on Monday, May 4th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. This will be a virtual public hearing. Residents will have three opportunities to express their opinion on the proposed budget. They are, they can send an email to the Town Council at towncouncil@plainville-CT.gov. They can send a voice message via a phone number to be published later this month. They can participate via the phone during the public hearing on that evening. Information on how to participate during the meeting will also be issued later. It'll be similar to the process we use this evening for the public hearing or the ordinance. Because of a previous executive order issued by Governor Lamont, towns are prohibited from holding all-day votes, referendums, and whatnot on the budget. As a result, after the public hearing, the Town Council will adopt the budget and set the mill rate for fiscal year 21 in time for the tax bills to be mailed before July 1st. If anybody has any questions or comments with regards to that, pretty much straightforward, but if you do, we'll try to answer those as well. If not, I'll move on to the White Oak update, which is item number four. In the meeting information package, there is correspondence from Attorney Alfred E. Smith, Jr. of Murtha-Kalina, attorneys at law, describing the scope of work he will be performing as it relates to his opinion concerning the applicability of the Connecticut Transfer Act and the possible acquisition by the town of the White Oak property located at 1 and 63 West Main Street. Attorney Smith will be participating in the May 4th Town Council meeting to detail his opinion and to respond to questions from the Town Council. His services total $4,500 and will be paid entirely by the state grant that was previously secured for the environmental study of the property that was performed by LaRrow Engineers. No action is required by the Town Council this evening, but I wanted to at least preview some of his scope of work and make sure that it's in your hands and give you a, you know, just an advanced notice that we'll be having further discussion on this at our next Town Council meeting. If there's no questions, I'll move on to item number five, which is the COVID-19 update. Information regarding COVID-19 pandemic changes daily, if not on an hourly basis. In a conference call with health officials held last Friday, the State Health Department is now predicting that the peak will not be occurring in Connecticut until around mid-May. The reason for this prediction is that the increase in testing, they feel, will reveal more cases of those with the virus. All town buildings continue to be closed to the public. However, town business continues to operate. Phones are being answered, and return calls are being made on a timely basis. Public Works is continuing with the road paving program, as you heard earlier during announcements, and Buildings and Grounds continues to maintain public facilities, including the parks. It is unclear at this time when town buildings will reopen to the public. The earliest, and this may change, is early July. It is unclear whether summer programs will be allowed to be held at this time. We may know more, you know, as time goes forward. Couple of items, the presidential primary has been moved back to August 11th. The Wings and Wheels at Robertson Airport, scheduled for June 13th, has been canceled for this year. In addition, the Hot Air Balloon Festival, scheduled for late August, has been canceled as well, and that just came out late yesterday evening. The Memorial Day Parade Committee will be meeting with the Health Director and myself tomorrow morning to discuss whether the Memorial Day Parade should be held. Southington has already canceled their parade for this year. Beginning this evening, the Governor has ordered that people must wear cloth covering their face and nose in public if unable to maintain a social distancing of at least six feet. People are looking, people looking for the latest information on COVID-19 pandemic can go to the Plainville-Southington Health District webpage at www.PS-HD.org. The town website will also be updating information about the virus. This information can be found at www.plainvillect.gov. And thirdly, information can also be found on the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention website at www.cdc.gov. Know if anybody has any questions with regards to that, to those items?
I was thinking about the parade today after we spoke and wondered if there had been a decision, so I'm happy that you're going to make a decision early enough so that people will know.
Yes, we're meeting with the parade organizers. I've had some initial conversations with Dave Dudak, and I suggested to him that they should confer with the Health Director and get his opinion before making a final decision, and we've got that planned for tomorrow morning.
Good, thank you for that.
Okay. Our next item I have is the financial dashboard. A copy of the financial dashboard for the third quarter ending March 31st was included in the meeting information package and was also posted on the town webpage. We'll go through that if you'd like. The town budget expenditures. We spent 71.08% of what was budgeted. Last two years' average is 69.12%, so that you're pretty much on budget. General government budget stands at 77.41%, three-year average is 74.62%, you know, so no unusual expenditures there. We are running over in police overtime, as we'll detail in a couple minutes, as well as some roadway overtime and Buildings and Grounds overtime, but certainly not snow overtime. The Board of Education budget is running at 67.19%. Their two-year average is 65.48%, recognizing that they're anticipating some savings in the next couple of months as a result of the fact that the schools are not open at this point in time. As far as police overtime is concerned, through the third quarter, the police overtime budget has spent 512,000 of its $550,000 budget. So there's $54,000 remaining. We expect to run over in that budget. The roadways overtime is running above what was budgeted as well. A lot of that has to do- do with the, with the leaf collection program that happens in the fall. Buildings and ground overtime has run over as well. Good portion of that, and we've discussed it at previous meetings, is a result of some of the extra time that's required for some of the events that happen with, with the town as well as their weekend overtime or taking care of the parks. Roadway snow overtime and Buildings and Grounds overtime ran under budget fairly significantly as well this year. The hauler tonnages for our municipal solid waste is running above, above what was budgeted. People are throwing out more trash. Maybe they have more time to throw out more trash. I'm not sure what the reason is necessarily, but we're right now predict, predicting or projecting that they will run over, we're running over right now approximately $40,000 more than what we have budgeted, if, you know, throughout the, throughout the remainder of the year. With regards to recycling, we've talked about recycling several times. We're projecting that we're going to have a, our current deficit right now in recycling is 26,000, about a little bit over $26,000. And we, we expect that to continue as we get through the end of the year as well. Does anybody have any questions on the expenditures?
No.
As far as revenues are concerned, all revenues received or that have been budgeted, we received 88.83, 73%. Our two-year average is 88.76%, so we're pretty much online as far as collection of all revenues. I will point out that the bond commission did approve last week monies that we've been waiting for, for quite some time for, for a LoSAP, Town Aid Road. And we'll be receiving those revenues shortly, according to the reports that we've read so far. As far as current taxes are concerned, we received 99.08% of our, of our current taxes that were due. Our two-year average is 99.15%. I believe and we hope that we'll receive 100% by the time we get to the end of the year. We have done that in past years. And that, the remaining amount to be covered to get to 100% is approximately $433,000. As far as our unassigned fund balance, it's the same as last month, $9.45 billion. The only unassigned fund balance that's been appropriated this year is the amount to offset the tax increase for the current fiscal year of $300,000. Is there any questions on the revenue side?
All set. Thank you.
If not, we'll move to the special funds, which include the Recreation Fund, Robertson Airport, Water Pollution Control Facility Budget and Plainville Library expenditures. As far as the Recreation Fund is concerned, we're running a little bit behind in expenditures and compared to the two-year average, not surprisingly. And the Recreation revenues are running a little bit behind the two-year average as well, as a result of, you know, some of the slowdown that's occurred and some of the change, changeover that we've had in staff as well. The Robertson Airport expenditures are running pretty much on budget. The reason for the two-year average being so high on the expenditure side is because there was some, there was, there was some projects expenditures that were included in the old reports, which I've now just limited to the, to make it easier to understand, limited it to the, to the operating budget only. On the revenue side, we receive, we're pretty much on budget. I will point out that as part of the federal, what they call CARES Act, C-A-R-E-S, it looks as though we, Robertson Airport may be receiving approximately $30,000 in additional revenues that could be used for operating expenses to help offset some of the losses that the fixed-based operator may be experiencing at the airport as a result of the, you know, slowdown in the economy. AECOM, who's our, they are our, our consultants with the airport, will assist us in, in preparing the, the application for the grant and hopefully we're able to secure those dollars. I will point out that we are receiving bids on a taxiway reconstruction project. Those bids are due this Thursday. And as a result of the CAREX, the CARES Act as well, the federal program. At the beginning of this project, we were projecting that 90% of those costs, which is a $2 million project estimate, would be, 90% of it would be covered by the federal government, $40,000, $40,000 be covered by the state and approximately a little bit over $170,000 would be coming out of the airport improvement fund, which is part of the Robertson Airport fund balance. But as a result of the CARES Act, it looks as though we may be getting 100% federal funding for that project, eliminating the need for monies to come out of our Robertson Airport fund, the airport fund, as well as, you know, the state share in this, on this amount. So, so at least those are two positive items if they, if they come through, come to fruition. With regards to the Water Pollution Control Authority budget, we're running pretty much online as far as our expenditures are concerned. Revenues, you know, pretty much the same as well. And as far as the Plainville Library, same with the Plainville Library as far as their funds are concerned for the current fiscal year. Are there any questions with regards to the special funds?
None at this time for me.
The last page we have is the major projects report. We have several major projects. We, we have road bond one and road bond two. The balances, road bond one, we still had some monies left over in road bond one, and we have spent some monies out of road bond two so far. You can see the balances of those. We have $644,000 left in road bond one and about $4.9 million left in road bond two. The phosphorus removal, removal project, we added a second line because we did encumber some dollars, but the balance in the phosphorus removal project right now, from what was originally appropriated, is, is almost about, almost a million dollars right now. We still have some, some work that needs to be done, but a good, a great majority of the work has been completed. So we, we do anticipate that there's, that, that project's going to come in under budget as well. The Wheeler School Project is winding down as well. We have foreign, excuse me, we have monies left in that, in that budget. And, you know, so we're expecting that to come in under budget as well. The parking lot project is, is, is pretty much complete. High school, Northwest Drive rehabilitation is complete, and I think we've returned the remaining amounts to the state or, or preparing to do that. And the PHS turf maintenance fund has a balance of $88,550. Anybody have any questions on that?
All set for me.
If not, I do have, that would be the report on the, you know, on the financial dashboard. And again, that's been posted on the town website. I think it was posted on Friday. I do have some happenings. First item I have is youth services. Healthy Plainville, which is an organization, a group, encourages the community to stay well by eating a healthy diet and exercising. If you go down to Norton Park, there are a lot of people that are walking around, presumably getting some fresh air and exercising, as well as safely maintaining a distance of six feet or more from others when outside. Some of their suggestions for a healthy lifestyle include their recommendation that you drink 32 ounces of water a day, every day this week. Disinfect all contact surfaces and don't forget those contact surfaces in your car. Share a personal success on social media. Follow a fitness video on YouTube and ask for help when feeling stressed. They had about 25 other suggestions. We, we synthesized down some of those, just so we wouldn't get too wordy this evening. As far as tax and assessing is concerned, just a reminder that tax bills can be mailed in, paid online or dropped in the lockbox in the parking lot between the stairs in the back of the municipal center. The web address for online payments, it's a long, you can see, you can see it there on, on the screen. I won't read it out. But if anybody has any questions about the website, go to, you can go to our webpage and, and find that as well, as far as how to make online payments. Although this, I'm going to repoint on the senior center. Although the senior center is closed for programs and activities, staff is available by phone during regular business hours. The social worker is also available by phone for questions or concerns about Medicare, financial assistance, caregiving issues and other questions. Foot care and earwax treatment is available by appointment. Dial-a-rite is available for non-emergency medical appointments and errands, including groceries, pharmacy and the bank. The only thing is you cannot be sick, have a cough or a fever if you're looking for a dial-a-rite service. The senior center will be offering some online programming for seniors, including ukulele jam with sessions. Really looking forward to that. For beginners and intermediate players and a gardening lecture and fitness classes. You can call 860-747-5728 for more information. I would point out that somebody called my office today about the library. They called back later to say I didn't have to call them back. They did point out that they were very happy that when they called the library, somebody answered the phone at the library. We do have staff at the library to answer the phones. The person pointed out that they called libraries in other towns and they weren't getting any answers. So they felt good that at least their, their phone was getting answered in Plainville, both at the municipal center, as well as at the library and certainly at the senior center and other departments as well. Last item I have, 2020 census. As of April 19th, 2020, so I guess the numbers are as, as, as up to date as yesterday. Plainville has reached a 60.5% self-response rate. In 2010, Plainville's mail-in self-response rate was 76.1%. For the first time in history, people can self-respond to the census online, and Plainville is trying to improve its response rate by at least 3% over 2010. Most especially, we want to reach those who are hard to count. Folks who are considered hard to count are those who are hard to locate, hard to contact, hard to persuade and hard to interview. Unfortunately, there are often some of the most vulnerable among us and at risk of being undercounted. These are the people who are hard to find or hard to count. If you know someone who fits this description, please encourage them that the census is safe, easy and important. The public is strongly encouraged to respond online at www2020census.gov. I will point out that Plainville response rate, self-response rate is higher than the, than the, both the national and state average is, is higher than Britain and Bristol at this point in time and not all that far behind Farmington and Southington. So I, I think we're doing a, a good job and we do encourage people to respond online so you don't have people knocking on your door multiple times trying to get you to answer your door. So that's, and for my report this evening, if town council members have any questions or comments they'd like to make, I still have some of my staff on board who will try to answer those questions if I, if I cannot do so myself.
Thank you, Robert. Is there any questions or comments for Robert's report from any of the council members? Okay, having said that, you must have done a good job, Robert. So thank you again for all the information you brought forward. Regarding the census, just a, just an aside, Rosemary has been in on the subcommittee for this census along with some other folks in, in town, and I just would like to encourage people, if you get the updates via Facebook from the town of Plainville regarding the sentence, census, please share it so that we can see that there's activity out there and that the word is getting out through a variety of avenues. So if you happen to see it, share it out so everybody knows we're engaged and we want to, we want to do as, the best job that we can, at least for this, this particular time around. So thanks, Rosemary, for helping out with all of that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary.
Yeah, just to reiterate what our, our chair, chairperson Kathy Pique has said, it's Rosemary Morante, by the way. Really important, not only maybe to share it with the social media, but perhaps to people that haven't responded yet, perhaps elderly relatives, for example, who may not have the online access. There is a telephone option as well. And if you reach out to, to those people who may not have responded yet, and obviously people have had a lot on their plate over the last month and a half, too. But if you can, can do that, it, it will help us. Thank you.
Great. That's a good reminder. Thanks, Rosemary. If there are no further comments or questions regarding Robert's report, I will move on to the public comment section of our meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, Robert spoke to some phone numbers that are available if anybody wishes to make a comment via the phone. I will, before we take any, any calls, if anybody's out there, I will relate, we did receive one email this week to the town council. We'll include it as part of our public comment was from John Kislick regarding our work on the budget. So that's the only email we have received thus far this week or last week. So I don't know if there's anybody on the line right now waiting to make a comment. Do we have anybody waiting?
We do have one person. I'm not sure. We can ask them if they want to make a comment.
Thank you, Kevin, if you would do so.
The one person whose number ends in 8317, I'm going to allow you to talk. Please state if you would like to make a comment or not.
Hello?
Hello? Would you like to make a comment? Yes, we can.
Uh, you know, a little bit, but.
Would you like to make a comment? Please state your name and address.
Sort of moved from the fence to the, to probably running category in the last, last hour. So I haven't, I don't have a lot of plans at the moment.
Sir, is your, your number ending in 8317? Please state your name and if you'd like to make a comment. If not, I'm going to mute your mic.
Hang on, Henry. This is Bill Pettit. Guys, I've been listening in and handling another phone call from the state at the same time. So I'm sorry, I was sort of bouncing back and forth, but I just wanted to say great job on the budget.
Thanks, thanks, Bill. And I have to thank you again for providing daily information regarding updates from the state of Connecticut, the Department of Public Health and everything that's going on regarding the governor's advise, advisories that he sends out along with the reports of the, the coronavirus in the hospitals and things to that extent. So I do want to thank you for being diligent about sending out daily updates.
No, you're, you're welcome. The, the information's a little bit overwhelming, so you choose, use what you want to use and it gets very confusing, especially when there's interplay between the state and the feds. We seem to, there seems to be a dearth of information sometimes in the details of programs.
Well, we appreciate all that work that you're doing in order to keep us up to date. Is there anything else happening at the state level you think we might be interested in other than COVID? Any budgetary moves or anything of that nature?
Not that I've heard. There's a rumor, rumor floating today that they might open up the building for staff in the next couple of weeks, but I haven't got a confirmation from anybody. So it may, may be just one of those bad rumors.
Okay. Well, we certainly appreciate hearing from you, Bill, and stay well.
Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, did we have anybody else join us this evening other than Bill?
That's all.
Okay. Well, thanks, thanks to State Representative Pettit for joining us, giving us some information. If there are no others on the line, I will close the public comment section at this time. Moving on to the rest of our agenda, we do not have any old business to transact, so I'm going to move on to our new business section. May I have a motion for the first item, please? Yes?
Madam Chair, Debra Tompkins, motion to adopt a proposed amendments to ordinance chapter 374 Streets, Sidewalks and Driveways, Article 1, Street Openings.
Avon, do what's second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair, Debra Tompkins, motion to appoint the firm of Bloom Shapiro to conduct an audit for the town of Plainville for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Second, Christopher Wazorko.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Item number three, please.
Madam Chair, Debra Tompkins, motion to approve the offering of the deferment program to eligible taxpayers pursuant to Section 6. to eligible taxpayers pursuant to Section 6 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7S and authorize the town manager to notify the state of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management.
Second, Ty Cox.
Thank you. I have a motion in the second. Any comments on that motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary.
Rosemary Moranti. Just very briefly, you know, I support this. I think the no-interest deferment option is definitely the most helpful to those who have been significantly affected, and I think it's a good idea for us to go with it. The application is not unduly burdensome, and it certainly sounds like our staff is ready to work with it.
Thanks, Rosemary. Again, earlier, I spoke to the town manager regarding the application that needs to be filled out by the folks that may want to participate, and there is no requirement to produce evidence of the fact that you have been affected by this outbreak. It's just an affidavit of statement that the town would take in and register that person or that household or business into the program. So it's not a matter of people having to produce a document or evidence that they've had some negative impact regarding the whole situation. So I think that's helpful, and it may encourage those that really feel they have to do this, get it done without too much of a difficulty. So I just thought I'd mention that before we go ahead and vote on this. Robert, do you have any other further comments you'd like to make before we vote?
No, I do not, I do not.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Wazorko.
I agree with both, with what you said, with Councilwoman Moranti said. The only minor item is, do we have to actually identify which defer program we are picking tonight? I don't think the motion specifically identified the grace period for three months with no penalty for those that qualify.
I think that there's a Section 6 part of the executive order.
Okay.
Is that right, Robert Lee?
Well, yes, and I think if you want to, the deferment program is, as you're, was described as you, you know, as it's being presented this evening, I think if you wanted to extend it to everyone, you would have to add that to the language to it, you know, not necessarily pick one or the other, because it would, they're offering a deferment program, and if you want to extend it, so the motion would say, and extend it to everyone as opposed to only eligible voters.
Thank you.
Eligible taxpayers, because it says eligible taxpayers, you know, I think that's the word that refers to not opening it up to everyone.
Okay.
Okay, as long as that's clear, and that is this evening, the intent of all the council that's going to be voting on this, I think we can, I think we can comfortably go ahead and vote on that, and if there is any, anybody asks a question, we could refer back to this meeting that that's specifically what this council decided they wanted to go ahead with. So if everybody is good with that option, we'll go ahead. So I will ask all those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you, the motion carries. Next item we have is a motion to approve tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Madam Chair, Debra Tompkins, so moved.
Steve Underwood, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. Mr. Lee, do we have any other discussions of interest this evening?
I do not, thank you.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we close? All right, we do not have an executive session, and to that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I don't know if you, anyone saw, but Attorney Mastriani joined. I don't know if you want to circle back, if he's available to speak.
Um, yeah, if he's there, we're just, we've already voted on the, on the amendment, on the motion for the tax deferment. Mike, but is there anything else that you'd like to add to that? Mike Mastriani, are you there?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know that I have been watching and listening to the meeting. I was just a little slow on the unmute button tonight.
Okay.
The only, the only comment I was going to make, Madam Chair, with regard to the deferment program, I was just going to make a comment that we have to understand that people who have mortgages on their current properties whereby they pay their real estate taxes through their mortgage company, those mortgage companies will continue to pay those taxes to the town of Plainville on time, so will not be affected, and they are not eligible under this program.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that clarification. Again, regarding this whole process, I spoke to the town manager, asking what is the percentage of those that pay through an escrow account, through the banks, and those that pay outright? And I think, Robert, you said it was 60% of the payments come through escrow and through a bank or some other funding institution?
Yes, and I believe that that was updated by Anne Marie. Anne Marie, Anne Marie, do you have an update on that percentage by any chance?
No, we pulled that, and that's an approximate. That change is year to year. As mortgages get paid off or as new people come on, it does fluctuate, but it's been running pretty well in that percentile. It's, that'll give us money to keep going, and then those who are not eligible for the program will keep us going. So that was our biggest concern, is that we wanted to make sure that we, the town had enough money to operate and that we met the needs of our most needy and most affected taxpayers. So, yeah, the number fluctuates, but I think it's a safe number to run with.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Mike, is there anything else you'd like to add before we close?
Nothing.
Okay, thanks to all of you that joined us this evening. I appreciate all of your help with all these things as we struggle with the first time. So if there are no other comments or questions, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I appreciate all your help. We're adjourned.